All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:31 PM, and we will call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present at this time. I would ask that everyone please rise while Mayor Potem Rini Betis leads us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve Harlingen, guide us with wisdom and compassion as we make decisions for our community. Help us work together in unity and make choices that benefit all of our residents. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Now the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mark?
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Okay. We'll continue on with item number three. Announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognition. Item 3A, Mayor, announcements. Do you have any announcements?
Just briefly, earlier today, we did have our check ceremony presenting checks to the nonprofits for the state-of-the-city nonprofit beneficiaries, and it was a wonderful event. Many of our sponsors were able to attend, and obviously, our nonprofits. And this year, we focused on our youth, the most vulnerable in our population, kids that are in foster care, neglected abused children, and we were able to provide assistance to multiple organizations. And today, I think we issued checks almost close to $50,000. And so, want to share that with the community, and that is something that we can all celebrate together.
And Mayor, none of that was public money. It was all sponsorship money, just to reiterate that.
Right.
And the checks are ready for the nonprofits.
All right. And so, yes, we did not want to burden our taxpayers, and so, the proceeds came from sponsorships, and so, we were able to support those organizations, and we hope to support more in the years to come. That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to item 3B, City Managers' announcements. Mr. Gonzalez?
The Parks Department will have a public hearing on July 25th to obtain information from residents on the park improvements. The meeting will start at 5:30. There's also a survey on Facebook that can be filled out, for those of you that have access to Facebook. And, as you know, Margarita Fest was canceled because of Hurricane Barrel. It has been set for Saturday, the 27th, at Lancy Hill Park from 5:00 to 10:00. That's all I have.
Okay. Next item, we have 3C, City Commission Member announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
I do. I would like to send out my condolences to the family of Mitzi Sistero. Mitzi was a career teacher here in Harlingen. She taught at Zavala and at Crockett. She went and taught in South America for a few years and came back. And for her last 25 years, she taught first grade at Bowie Elementary. And I mean, that itself probably is worthy of sainthood. Mitzi was active in the church with the Lions Club. She was one of the founders of the Harlingen Amigas Lions Club, where I got to know her, one of the sweetest ladies on earth, and she will be greatly missed. So, that's all I have.
No comment.
All I can say is I echo Commissioner Kinsley. Thank you, sir. I was one of those troublemakers many, many, many years ago at Bowie.
I bet you wore your butt out.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Next item is item four, proclamation presentation of awards. Item 4A, Mayor's Business of the Month Award, Better Bodies.
So, as you've heard, we have a Business of the Month. So, before I ask Mr. Tanguma to come up here and say a few words, we have prepared a video for you.
Hi. I'm Huwakanguma. I'm the owner of Better Bodies Personal Training Studio in Harlingen, Texas. Better Bodies is a personal training studio. All of my work is done by appointment, by the hour. All of my clients have their set days, their times when they come in. I train them every time they're here, throughout the entire time they're here. The sessions typically last about an hour, a little bit over sometimes, depending on what we're doing. They pay 12 sessions in advance, they come in on their regular time, and we get their workout done. I saw a need. Years ago, I was managing some gyms, and I always tried to help as many of the members as I could. And member after member kept saying, you know, there was only somewhere we can go where you could train us by ourselves. If there was only somewhere we can go where you could train us personally. And I started thinking about it, and I thought, well, maybe there's a need for this. So, I opened my first training studio when I was about 21. I was the first one to open a private studio in McAllen, actually, before I opened Harlingen, and took off from there. Went well, and so far, so good. Here we are, almost 30 years later.
But did you die? No, I didn't.
Don't let the misconceptions scare you. Most people still, despite how mainstream weightlifting has become and exercise has become, a lot of people still have a misconception about touching weights. They think if they touch a dumbbell or they touch a machine, they're going to explode their muscle and get huge and get bulky and make ugly, and most people don't want that. They want to stay lean, they want to lose some weight, they want to be toned. The reality is, you'll shrink and lose weight before you actually get big and gain weight with weight work. Come in as you are. That's the whole point. We start everyone at square one. As if you've never done anything before, take you step by step, slow but constant progression, get you where you want to be physically, aesthetically, health-wise. You can find me at 605 Kamali Drive, Harlingen, Texas, 78550. Feel free to text me at 956-490-3635 for any information, training schedules, so on and so forth. I'd like to thank all my clients, I'd like to thank everyone who supported me all these years, that stood behind all the crazy ideas, and helped it come to fruition, really.
Mr. Tanguma, if you'd like to come up?
Mayor, before he says anything, he did say that if all of us joined the gym, he would make us look like he does.
We were talking about that earlier. Just do what I ask, and you'll be good.
You are a miracle worker above all things.
I try. I try. This is greatly appreciated. I'm flattered. To even be considered, much less chosen, is flattering. It's a wonderful experience, and I appreciate it greatly. Thank you each and every one of you for having me and giving me this award. Been in Harlingen since roughly 2002. Like I said, I had a student at McAllen and ran that for several years and decided to open Harlingen, and just got real comfortable here. So, I sold everything at McAllen and moved, and I've been here since. So, torturing people one by one.
Well, thank you for joining us, and thank you for doing what you do and keeping our community healthy and promoting health and wellness. And I know you've got a big support team back here.
Yeah, they're willing to come and support me despite what I do to them, right?
I know. It says a lot. So, thank you so much. We appreciate you. More than 20 years of business in Harlingen. And so, once again, if you want to just give your, I know it was in the video, but your location is near Con's Grill, that area?
Yes, yes. I'm at 605 Kamali, which is in the commercial center where Con's Grill is, right behind Lowe's. There's a commercial center. It's like a horseshoe, essentially. Dr. Smith is in there, Plenoso's in there, there's, Dr. Cobos is on the corner, and Con's Grill is there. I'm at the cul-de-sac, right at the back of the cul-de-sac. Back in 2015, I bought the lot, started construction, moved in about 26. I had been renting, leasing on the other side of town up until that point, and like I said, at the end of 2015, started construction, built 4,300 square feet, the way I needed it, the way I wanted it, to serve the clients, to serve everyone, you know, as needed, as wanted, to be comfortable and happy there. So, like I said, yeah, it is right behind Lowe's, just up the street from Con's. So, not right on the main strip, but centrally located, pretty much.
I think I remember the name. You were over by the Domino's and MercadoMall, like that area, right?
Correct, right. I was adjacent to Domino's and Quips and Quotes for years. As a matter of fact, from the time I moved to Harlingen, I was leasing from Rodelco, started in a very small suite and expanded into two suites, and expanded into, when they renovated, they enlarged a couple of suites, combined them, then I leased those. So, I leased for them for the better part of 15, 17 years or so. Yeah, and it was on the left of town, right next to Quips and Quotes and Domino's. Yeah.
I went to the Domino's, not to the gym, clearly.
Everybody has a cheat day. Everybody has a cheat day.
Oh, but what, thank you. Thank you for joining us. If you wouldn't mind having a photo with the commission, if everybody can join me down here?
And I'd like to invite you to join us in a photo.
How long would it take to look at that?
Three months.
That'd be Monty Walsh.
Three months.
One, two, three, four, five, and...
Does anyone else want to come up and take a photo?
Come on. Everybody come here with a brief. Ashley, uh, come on in.
Oh, no, I don't want to be in the air. No, 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 no.
When they came all the way out.
Can I put me in the back this time?
Do you remember it was that little?
Yeah, I do. When you said that? Yeah.
That was wonderful. Moving on?
Moving on to item five, citizen communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on any topics addressed. Mayor, we did have two citizens that have signed up for citizen communication. We'll start with Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Something's always happening somewhere. So, Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan Tucket Drive, longstanding citizen of Harlingen. Usually, basically, it's the same song and dance for me, but with a little twist, as they say. So, you know, there's a lot of good, positive things, like I said before, going on in Harlingen. Of course, in my personal opinion, being here since, you know, the mid-'70s, we were ahead of the game in a lot of things, from other cities, other municipalities, as the correct term would be, to where we fell in a little bit of stagnation, and now, we're trying to play catch-up, which I guess we're doing that. I think we could probably progress a little bit faster if there was more consistency in certain things, and it's good that there's a lot of construction, a lot of businesses are looking to come. And being in Harlingen, I know myself, for the things that I've done when I was actually active and doing a lot of business in the field of IT and other things that I was doing, where we had, because of companies I did business with on the East Coast, look at Harlingen and the thing that really, they liked Harlingen and stuff, but the thing that always kind of killed it for them is we need something that's going to draw people and make them want to come to Harlingen. You know, Bronzel, they got Mexico, McAllen, they got Mexico and all these large shopping things. I think Harlingen's key is that we're in the center part of the valley, and we got, you know, in my opinion, what used to be White Wing Stadium that can be utilized to do very large festivals and events, and maybe we can be known for something like that. That's one of the reasons why I like to do festivals. Everybody tells me, well, you got both venues on either side and you get to sell alcohol. Well, yeah, that has a key of it, too. But I always try to do them for free, for the citizens, and get sponsors to flip the bill and stuff. And, you know, I think that would be something we used to be, you know, Real Fest, and, sorry about that, Real Fest in the Jubilee and stuff. I used to go to that stuff when I was a kid. I loved it. I made sure I was here in the valley instead of San Antonio when that stuff was going on. And I think if we capitalize on the things we can and showcase what Harlingen can actually, you know, give a reason or incentive to get people from SpaceX and other companies that are looking to develop things down here because of the way the economy is, it would be a big plus. We just need to make sure we have the right people involved with that. And, you know, always do your research, you know, check out the credentials, see if it's valid, you know, vet them out and stuff. I run into a lot of scenarios where those steps are missed. But the buzzer be me, so I'm out of here. Thank you for your time, and apparently, I'll be here tomorrow. I just found out, so y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Next up, we have Robert Lefwitch.
Robert Lefwitch, 909 East Parkway. I just wanted to come this evening because I'm a little upset about some of the disingenuous misinformation that's being proliferated through the city's Facebook site, through animated videos and manipulated documents to try to deceive the public into thinking that there's not been any tax increases in the last few years. The fact of the matter is, when you look at the city documents, and more specifically, the CAFRA that we just listened to, it was announced that the total fund balance for the general fund totaled $37,488,662 on September 30 of 2023. The unassigned fund balance for the general fund was $35 million, an increase of $4,700,000 over the last years. That means that there was $4 million, $4.7 million of an increase. The fund balance of the general fund presented above will provide the city with approximately 236 days of operations expenditures for fiscal year 2024. The level of fund balance is above the city's goal of 90 days of operational expenditures. With the combining of the fund balance and the general fund, catastrophic emergency fund, the city has approximately 241 days of expenditures. If the goal was 90 days, I would say that your coffers are overflowing, and when you go and you implement a tax increase, you're just burdening people. And I want to just read further. It said, "The city in informal maintain a fund balance of 25% of the following fiscal year annual debt service requirement. The goal evaluated by the fiscal year is determined to be in excess of the city's need." So, now, you've got 244, that was in September. I think Carlos Cosco said we were up to 266. His auditor said that you don't need more than 60 to 90 days of fund balance. But y'all keep raising taxes. Fact of the matter is, y'all are saying the rate was reduced. It was reduced because y'all went with the voter approval rate. The voter approval rate is the highest, as we all know, that y'all can go with without going to the public with a voter referendum to improve, to increase it anymore. Let's look at the 2024, what the budget says. The budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $1.8 million or 7.72%. Of that $300,000 is new property. That means that $1.5 million of property is burdened on existing property owners. Let's look at the year before that, 2023. The budget will raise more revenue for property taxes than last year's budget by $1 million, an increase of 4,570. The fact of the matter, the last year of Mayor Boswell's tenure, the total was 800,000. Y'all have raised $1.8 million in 24 months. That's a tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
Mayor, that concludes our citizen communication for this evening.
Moving on?
Okay. Next item, we go on to item six, approval of minutes, regular meeting of May 15, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Item seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Is there any items that need to be removed? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to item eight, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, city manager's report.
I don't have any reports.
Do you have anything to disclose? Moving on to item 8B, staff reports. We do have Public Works Drainage Report.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. Here we are once again. So, we're going to give you a quick overview of basically all the drainage projects that we have begun and also completed since the beginning of our drainage program, right? First, we are going to start with the hell ditch. So, this ditch took approximately about three months to complete. It's a total of 3,310 linear feet long, and it benefited the area southeast of Ed Carey. Prior to us beginning this project, the ditch was 35 feet in width, and once we completed this project, it approximately from to the top of the bank is anywhere between 70 and 90 feet. So, it was a considerable amount that we wind this ditch, and of course, it's to retain a lot more water, right? So, this is the area. You do, this is the area that basically took, you know, that benefited from this improvement. The next one is Losano Detention Pond. As you can see, the picture to your right, that's an aerial picture that we took. It's a big detention pond, right? It's 14 acres. We have, we're about 70% completed on the first phase. We have called out to 21,950 yards, and this project was bidded out at 745,000. We found cost savings by doing this in-house. I can tell you that we have been getting some rain events here in the last two weeks, but, and we were on goal to finish the first phase by the end of July, but because of these rain events, we're extending it for another two to three weeks. But in about three weeks, we should be complete with the first phase, and then we'll start working on the pilot channel, and it's, I mean, it's a big improvement, right? And so, this is the area that benefited from the detention pond. The next one, it's the T Drain Ditch. This one right here, it's one of the first projects when Oscar Garcia came on board that he realized that was needed. He did it all on his own, just so you all know. No, I'm just joking. So, on this drain ditch, it's 2,400 linear feet, and it took about 10 weeks to complete. Before we started the project, this ditch was about 40 feet in width, and then, when we finished, from the top of the bank, it's anywhere between 75 and 90 feet in width. We had to verify that we had the right of way to make sure that we did this improvement, and through the help of the engineer, we were able to find out that we had the right of way. And so, this is a project that, you know, benefited a big space. And so, if you see the picture there on your left, that's a rental and a long-reach excavator. Basically, that's an excavator that we have been renting on every single one of these projects. So, I just want you to keep that in mind, okay? And again, this is the area that benefited from this project. And now, I'm going to pass it on to our streets superintendent.
Mayor, commissioners, Danny Diaz, Public Works Street Superintendent. This drain ditch here is an area where any one or two inches of rain would get flooded. The ditch there was only a 10-foot wide ditch, so we went ahead and opened it up to 25 feet. And at the outfall, as you can see on the right bottom, that inlet, it's maybe like 12 inches on the entrance there. So, any debris, trees, bags, any trash that would get in there would clog it up, and everything would back up in the street. So, on the top, you can see we raised that inlet, and we came up with that design. I talked to Luis, our city engineer, and he was okay with that. And by doing that, this is the result. As you can see, nothing clogs. So, that was a huge improvement for that area.
What rain event is that water from?
This is from a couple of weeks that we had, that, was it like four or five inches of rain that we got down? The streets were clear. Yes.
That was tropical storm Alberto?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's a huge improvement there. And that's the area that benefits from that improvements. This one is the Tex dot Drain Ditch. This drain ditch had been neglected for over, I want to say, at least 10 years. Had been maintained, it's, I mean, it was in very, very bad shape. So, we were able to set up a meeting with Tex dot, and they were okay with us doing the maintenance. And what they're going to do is they're going to reimburse us for the rental of the machines. And hopefully, we can set something up here in the future to kind of let us do the maintenance, and maybe they can pay us to do it, because, you know, it affects this area here, Mr. Petis' area, and Mr. Morales, District 4 and District 5.
So, this is around, just so the people that are watching at home can know, this is the area on Haverford, so this is by Harlingen South, by Walmart, and by Victor Park, correct?
That is correct.
And I just want to let you guys know, because I knew you did this project, I've received calls from the people that live on Haverford, and they wanted me to extend their thanks, because they were worried about it, and they knew that we're going into hurricane season, they were worried about the flooding and all that, how it was all messed up and there was trash in there and all that, that you guys went up there and cleaned it up for them. They wanted me to say thank you. So, it's very much appreciated by the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, that's the area, so District 4 and District 5 is going to benefit from this improvement here. And this one is a 13th Drain Ditch. This one, we did, we cleaned up the pilot channel. It was not too bad, but it helps, especially on the Gabriel's Landing Adams area, which any big storm that you have there, I mean, the infrastructure's kind of small, so by cleaning the pilot channel improves the flow on the water, so this is another one.
Danny, on the other slide for the Tex dot Drain, how long did that take to complete?
That one was...
That was 10 weeks.
10, yeah, 10 weeks.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear to the public, that's how much time we spent on that ditch.
Right. Press it on the Chris now.
So, as y'all can see on those two pictures, this is a 40-inch pipe that, actually, Danny located, that is in the intersection of, let me bring it up here. It's Mississippi and Frontage, right? So, if you see the left picture, it's a big pipe, and it was completely blocked. It had a lot of sediment, it had, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. And so, Danny went out there with the vector truck, and it took about seven days to flush it out. He didn't get completed on that flushing. He got maybe about 60, 70% done. He had to go back and complete that job. But this is something that affects the city, right? And so, we are being proactive on even finding... proactive on even finding stuff that doesn't pertain to us, to try to do that, that being proactive on getting stuff like this, you know, cleaned out. So, in the event that we do get a heavy rain event, we, we don't get all the flooding that we usually do. And I, he is going to be inspecting a lot more, more of this type of piping, right? That doesn't necessarily pertain to us. Just so you know, we did reach out to Texnot, and they told, they told me that, that they were going to send somebody out, so that they can look at what the problem is, but we never get a call back, right? But we are still in, in, you know, in discussion with them to try to negotiate something so that we can both work together to, to make sure that all of this is cleaned out. Now, I'm going to pass it on to Ruth now.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. My name is Ruth Trevino, Assistant Public Works Director for the record. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the preventative maintenance we have in place here in the city of Harlingen. So, we do perform year-round inlet cleaning. And right here on the map that I'm about to show you, it's going to show you the number of storm drain inlets we have in the city per district. So, if you see there District One, we have nine hundred and twenty-one inlets. In District Two, we have one thousand two hundred and twenty-two inlets. District Three, we have seven hundred and eighty-four inlets. For District Four, we have nine hundred and fifteen inlets. And District Five, we have one thousand one hundred and nineteen inlets. So, in total, the number of storm drain inlets that we have citywide is four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. So, we do have two vector trucks in the department at the moment, and we work one district per week. So, weekly, we do cover between five thousand to six thousand linear feet, which is equivalent to about fifty to sixty inlets per week. And this is just to ensure that we are, you know, doing an effective drainage throughout the city. So, let me see, the next one. Also, we wanted to talk a little bit about our sandbag distribution. So, we did have Storm Albert, where we distributed a total of fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five sandbags. And during Hurricane Barrel, we distributed a total of nineteen thousand six hundred and eight, with a total of thirty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-three sandbags in the last two events that we've had. Now, also due to the lack of clerical staff, we requested assistance from code enforcement and from our health department. So, we also wanted to give them a huge thanks. There were a lot of help during this time. They helped to document all the sandbags that were being distributed to, toward the residents, so there were a lot of help. Also, as a side note, I would like to mention that we are meeting next week with Cameron County to see the possibility for reimbursement of the sandbag operation. So, hopefully, we can get something out of that next week. And I'm going to pass it over to Chris, but he's going to talk a little bit about the bank counter.
Before we jump over, so it takes us, based on the numbers you gave me, fifty to sixty inlets per week. We have four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. That means for us, it takes us about two years to do the whole city once.
Right. So, on the, on the one that we have the most, I believe it was your district. So, about one thousand two hundred and twenty-two takes about twenty months to get to all of them. So, and then the smaller ones, about fifteen months, between fifteen to twenty months to get to all of them.
Thank you.
And, and so, jumping on with that question, right? So, I'm going to present here a piece of equipment that we could utilize in consideration of not spending over five hundred thousand dollars on a new vector truck. This is called a vaccon trailer. So, basically, this does almost what a vector truck does. But this is, this is a trailer that gets pulled with a, with a pickup truck. So, this, this piece of equipment right here, it would, would be really benefited the downtown area. Of course, we can do the rest of the city, right? But the downtown area would be perfect because of the infrastructure that's there. Almost all the infrastructure is about ten, ten inches. And so, this, this would be perfect for that. Then, again, we can always put it on, on other areas of the city. So, this one right here can, can flush or, or vacuum seven hundred gallons versus a vector truck, which is two, two thousand gallons, right? But again, this is, if you look at the total, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars versus over, over five hundred and fifty thousand, this is just an option, right, that maybe y'all can consider. So, we just, again, just let you know what some of the options are, so that we can be a little bit more proactive when it comes to flushing, vacuuming, and, and all that. And with that, we are done. Do you have any questions?
I just want to thank you for all of your hard work, everyone in, in Public Works. I know that leadership is important, and under your leadership, I know that the team is able to reach their, their potential, and of course, limited in resources in, in terms of equipment and things like that. So, we're, we are, we are looking at that very, very closely to be able to give you as much as we can within the constraints, right, of the, of the budget. But I will share with, you know, kind of echo what, what I think Commissioner Pettis said. We've been getting calls from the community thanking, thanking you for your, for your hard work. And some of those, I, I send them over to Oscar to share with y'all. But I hope that you also share them with your team, because it's important for them to know that they're, they're valued, they're appreciated. And, and it makes a difference for someone to have just the confidence that, you know, if there's rain, that they're not going to get water in their home. And people like that, that were more, like, just desperate and, and wanting to have some kind of peace of mind. I know the phone calls made by Chris and, and Oscar go a long way, and sometimes even those personal visits to, to the homes as well. But really, the true heroes, right, are the, all the guys and girls that work on, on the team and do the actual work. So, please extend our appreciation to them as, as well.
Absolutely. As I mentioned here, when we did the proclamation for Texas Public Works, Public Works has a, an excellent team. There, there's not one staff member that, that wouldn't, doesn't, doesn't like what they're doing, right? And so, I, I, you know, I echo what you say. It's, we have a great team. So, thank you. And, and thank you for your support, right? Without your support, you know, we would just be another department, but we are Public Works. So, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Continuing on to item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, we did have one citizen that signed up for a public hearing pertaining to item nine D.
Okay. Fantastic. And so, what we'll do is we'll just go through the others briefly, just for the record, and then we will call up the resident to speak. So, moving on to item nine A, public hearing for an SUP to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located eleven oh five South Tam Lane, bearing a legal description of three point four seven four zero acres out of block thirty-three in Stewart Place subdivision. We will open the public hearing at this time for this item, and having no one here to speak for or against the adoption of this item, and having no one signed up, we will close the public hearing. Item nine B, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of a seven point nine acre tract of land out of Lot sixteen, the Cunningham subdivision located along the south side of Primeta Road, approximately eleven hundred feet west of I sixty-nine East. We will open the public hearing at this time, but having no one here to speak for or against or signed up, we will close the public hearing. Item nine C, public hearing for rezoning request from residential multifamily district and general retail district to a planned development district for townhome lots with a zero-foot side setback for all lots in the reserved subdivision located along the north side of North Business Seventy-seven Sunshine Strip, approximately two hundred ninety-three feet west of G Street. We'll open the public hearing at this time, having no one here to speak for or against this item, and no one signed up, we will close the public hearing. Item nine D, the public hearing amending the city of Harlingen One Vision, One Harlingen Comprehensive Plan by changing the designation of the future land use plan from industrial to low-density residential for a seventy-three point sixty-nine acre tract of land, more or less out of and form a part of block twenty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, the Palm Metal subdivision located along the south side of Grimes Avenue, approximately sixty, sixty-five hundred feet east of Loop four ninety-nine. And the applicant is Francisco Ariaga. And I do see that the applicant, Mr. Ariaga, has signed up for the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask Mr. Ariaga to please approach.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Francisco Ariaga. I'm a developer from Brownsville, and I like Harlingen. I, our, our purpose is to, to build a subdivision that consists of three hundred and fifty affordable homes, single-family homes. The location, maybe you can see there on the screen, it's south of Grimes Road and Bob Juker. The type of subdivision that we are proposing to build will consist of, like I said, three hundred and fifty homes. Right there, you can back, you can go back. Sure, there you go. You can see the location of that, of the proposed subdivision just south of Grimes. And this subdivision will have, would have restrictions, construction, architectural restrictions, as far as what type of construction. It will, it will, we will allow only brick or stucco homes, all built in concrete slabs. We will allow, we will have only all underground utilities. We will have a required landscaping sidewalks, and make it into a nice, nice-looking subdivision. We will not allow mobile homes, no frame homes either. And it will include, like I said, the homes will be about, starting at the low two hundred thousand, about two hundred square feet, three bedroom, two bath type of home. And we believe that this type of project would benefit everyone, from creating, creating jobs for construction workers, to opportunities for banks, mortgage companies, realtors, and of course, the homeowners themselves. But I believe that the, who's going to benefit the most is the city of Harlingen, because in, in terms of increasing your tax revenue. Because this would, this project will convert land that's sitting there, agricultural land that's producing nothing, from zero valuation to about eighty million dollars in valuation. So, I don't know how to do the math, as far as how much the city would get, but you can, you can do the math on that. That, that's the evaluation estimated, and three hundred and fifty homes, about two hundred thousand dollars each. And I mentioned, I mean, I, I saw you mention things about drainage. The, we will create our own detention pond here. I don't know, there's another slide where it shows. Okay. This is a proposed layout of the subdivision. And you have, we would have a detention pond here, so that we, we will create our own detention pond according to city requirements. And of course, the, I believe, is Drain District Number Five, the ones who controls that's, that area. And we would have the, the overflow of the drain into this drain over here, existing drain. And if we can, we can also offer our services to widen the drain ditch, to create even more space right here. And we can do that at no cost to the city, if that, if that's a requirement. And although the benefits is that this, this, this street, Bob Juker, is actually not a street, it's just dirt. It's a dirt road. Now, the, the street from, is this eighty-six, right? This street right here, the paving ends out of the railroads right here, and the, all of the rest is, so, we can work together to get this paved street, you know, get that street paved, and, and, and create, and connect Grimes all the way down here. And I believe that Harlingen has a lot of potential for growth. That's one of the reasons where we'd like to invest in, in Harlingen. And its location and its potential for growth is excellent. And I would really be grateful if this committee approves our request to rezon, so that we can get this project started. Now, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ariaga. I do have a question. You said that that would be a detention pond? Is that right? Is that what, did I hear you say that?
Yes. When, when you build a subdivision, you, we always create a detention pond right here.
Right there. Okay. I understand. And so, who's going to maintain that pond? Would you have, would these homes have an HOA, or what, what's the vision?
Well, usually, we, we, in this type of, of a project, in this size of a project, we usually turn it over to the city for, for, for maintenance. Of course, that's not a very attractive decision. But, but we can, I mean, that would be something we can discuss as far as who's going to maintain it. Okay? Usually, when we do all those other issues in other cities and invest this, this amount of money, the cities, the city take care of the, of the, of the, basically just mowing grass, right, around the detention pond. Because the detention pond itself doesn't require a lot of maintenance. It's, it's just, you know, it just retains water. And, but around it, it's what requires some maintenance for landscaping or, or, or cutting the grass there.
Okay.
Mark, you know how like the DID, the Downtown Improvement District, they have a little higher property taxes? Could you do something like that for neighborhoods, and that money specifically go just towards detention maintenance? Because it's directly for their benefit. I know I'm putting you on the spot, but...
Yeah, I'm, I, I'd have to research that, to be honest. I'm not sure.
One of the ways...
Higher tax rate?
No, I've never... DID, when you sign up to be part of the DID, you pay a little more in property tax? I think it only brings in an extra fifty thousand dollars, right?
But that's the...
But that money can then only be used for the benefit of that area.
Right. But that's in the statute that allows us to do that.
There are specific statutes for downtown improvement districts, but I don't know that anything that would apply here. Usually, I've seen homeowners associations take out...
That's exactly right. That's what the homeowners association does, and it's what allows them to charge an extra fee for maintenance of the detention pond. And that's ideally the way you'd want to do that, because then they could always contract with the city to pay for that maintenance or contract with another private developer that wants to do that.
That's where you have an entity that is responsible for it.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we would, we would rather not take over another detention area, because we have enough that, as you saw in the report a while ago, and you saw the length of time needed to just address some of those. And so...
Is that something that you would feel comfortable with? I, I recognize what it is that you're trying to do, and I, and I, keeping the price point lower, making it more affordable for, for, for folks to get into a home, just because of, you know, the rates have, have skyrocketed in terms of interest rates. And with inflation, we're seeing higher-priced homes. And so, now your two hundred thousand dollar home buyer is having to buy the three hundred thousand home, and, and we recognize all of that. But is there room for an HOA or some type of ownership in, in accountability in maintaining? Because I know you say that it, it, it's not a lot of maintenance, but I would argue that, that it is. And we have a whole crew that, that's dedicated to a lot of detention ponds that were already there before I got here, and before most of this commission was here. And it is challenging, and we want to make sure that they have a, you know, the, the future tenants. I think it's a great project. I think it's wonderful to be able to provide and, and redevelop that area. However, we want to make sure that, that quality of life and, and is, is up to par, and that, that involves also the maintenance of, of that detention pond.
I think we can, we can discuss that. I mean, that we can entertain something like that, as far as perhaps creating HOA to, to offset that expense. If you look at the revenue that you will get, it will be in the millions, probably, and as far as, and then compare it to the maintenance cost, will be like a year, like maybe ten thousand or something like that to maintain. So, that's, that's really a, a big trade-off, you know? You're getting millions of tax dollars for just maybe to cut it, to cut the grass one, you know, once, two, three weeks. Well, now, now they, these days, it's been raining a lot, so.
I agree. I agree.
It's, that can grow, that can be. But I, in other cities I've, I've, we've developed, there's probably a provision, I don't know, we'll have to... that will have to be reviewed by the attorneys, that you can also add a, increase a tax, put a small tax, like you mentioned, to the, to that subdivision to, to, to generate revenue for maintenance. But if that would be an issue, then we could create an HOA. We can, if we cannot find means to raise revenue so that the city doesn't have to pay for the maintenance, then we can create an HOA. Now, I don't, that will, that will not be a showstopper for this.
Okay. And, and I, I agree that, you know, it seems like the trade-off is not that, when you're looking at the significant investment, but within the city, we have challenges with enough, you know, folks to be able to do the maintenance itself. So that's, that's the challenge, not so much the cost of it, but just the time and the resources. And so I think that's, that's an, an issue. But I don't know, did anybody else have any questions?
I only have one, sir. On the subdivision here, correct me if I'm wrong, please, there's only one entrance and exit in, into this subdivision, correct?
No.
Which is the Grimes?
No, there is, there, we have, we have to provide additional. This is one in Grimes, and we will have one, you know, here in Bob Uker.
Okay.
Another one over here. And we have another one over here.
Perfect. I'm good. Thank you.
And I'll just say, life is a series of trade-offs. And I think the city should accept this. Another detention pond, retention pond is worth the net to the city. More houses, more property taxes, more income, more people living in the city. Growing our retail space and everything else that's in our commercial space and everything else within the city.
Thank you. I also want to say, if you, let's say you charge $2,000 a month to, to any contractor to do it, that will be 24,000 a year. So it's really the, the expense is not that much. So we can work, you know, with the city as far as of that. If that would be the expense of maintenance, we could, we could share it with the, the rest of the, of the owners. But as the Commissioner Mesmar mentioned, the trade-off is, is really, most cities just don't take, they don't even argue about that because they, the benefit is wait, awaits, outweighs the, the, the drawback of the maintenance.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adiaga. Is there any other questions? Well, thank you for choosing Harlingen. We appreciate it. And I know that you said you came from Brownsville, so thank you for, for being here. We appreciate you taking the time to be here. And just stick around and we'll get to your item.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, having no one else here to speak for or against, or anyone else signed up, we'll close the public hearing and move on. Melinda?
Okay. Moving on to Item 10, action items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit...
Melinda, sorry. Can we just skip down? Let's go a little bit out of order and go over to 10I.
10I, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on authorizing the issuance and delivery of the City of Harlingen, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series 2024, authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement and an escrow agreement relating to such bonds and pledging the revenues of the city waterworks and sewer system to the payment of the principal and interest on said bonds and ordering other matters relating thereto.
Mayor...
Harlingen Water Works. Oh, sorry, sir.
Ann Berger is here with First Southwest. She's a financial advisor on this bond issuance. I believe they have some information regarding the, the rate of interest and the, the term. Ron is also here, who is the Finance Director, and David, who is the Interim Water Works Director, is here as well. Do you have enough comments?
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, yes, sir?
Before you start, legally, I must disclose that I'm securities licensed. I'm a financial analyst. I have no financial involvement with you or your company.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. Gonzalez, for the record, my name is Ann Berger Entrikin, and we serve as the city's financial advisor. The item we have for your consideration this evening is the issuance of $10 million in City of Harlingen Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds. These bonds are, have no abhorrent tax pledge at all. They are solely secured by the revenues from the city's waterworks and sewer system. If I may ask you to please turn to Tab 3. What we have on this page is we show the interest rate, the sources and uses, and a couple of the transaction highlights. On the left, we have the amortization of the $10 million in the principal beginning in fiscal year '26 through and inclusive of 2055. In the next column, we show the coupon and the yield, which starts at a 1.85 and ends at a 2.68%. We calculate the interest, and then we have the aggregate debt service. So the $10 million in par, an aggregate of $4,258,215 in interest for approximately $14,258,000 in aggregate debt service. The par amount is the $10 million, so the expected project fund deposit is $9,720,000. The cost of issuance attributed to this transaction is $107,519. And then you see the loan origination fee. The Texas Water Development Board has a fee of 1.75% that is charged on all their clean water SRF transactions, and so the, the proceeds will be utilized to make that payment. As I mentioned, this is utilizing the Texas Water Development Board's Clean Water SRF Program, which is an EPA program administered through the state. The Harlingen Water Works System is an A-, however, for purposes of the Water Development Board setting the interest rate, they used a double A, which provides additional savings. The true interest cost after we aggregate all of the amounts is a 2.557, and this is an equivalency 30-year loan. And the importance of that is that the Water Development Board with this program with an equivalency loan provides a 40% interest rate subsidy. So if I may please ask you to turn to the next page. The market rates that we receive from the Water Development Board were a 3.76%. They then took their 40% subsidy, so this is how we get to the 2.557%. So the actual interest rate is projected to be 121 basis points, or 1.21% less than you would have with a market rate loan. And so over the life of this bond issue, we project that that's going to save over $2.4 million because of the fact that this is a subsidized program. On the next page, and we're not going to go into a whole lot of detail, but this is just an important calculation, the net available for debt service, the existing Harlingen Water Works System debt service, this particular bond issue. We were able many years ago to get the basic documents for the waterwork system not to require a reserve fund. However, the Texas Water Development Board does. You can see that in the third column from the right. It needs to be funded in an amount just under $470,000. But those dollars stay at the waterwork system. They earn interest. The waterwork system gets to earn the interest. And generally, what happens is that reserve fund is utilized to make the last debt service payment. And then, please, on to Slide 7. We recommend that the City Commission consider and approve the terms from the Water Development Board as the purchaser. Just so you know, I attended the Harlingen Water Works Board meeting at 5:00, and they passed the necessary resolution, which does request that the City Commission consider this item. We believe that the fact that the true interest cost is a 2.55 and projected savings of over $2.4 million over the life of the bond are one of the compelling reasons that we make this recommendation. As part of this process, the, the Water Development Board has a very standard process, very standard steps and required timing. And we just want to make sure, we thank everyone who helped to move, to accommodate, and, and meet the Water Development Board's timing. We appreciate that very much here at the city and, as well at the Harlingen Water Works System staff. The bond counsel on this was Bill Avila. He was very helpful. And the staff at the Water Development Board was very helpful as well. And finally, before I turn it over for any questions you may have, we would just like to thank the City Commission as well. We have been very honored and grateful to have our long-term relationship and appreciate the opportunity to serve on this and to be a part of the team.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
You have the, let's get the right page for everybody. Page four, you have true interest cost 3.76%. And then on page nine and 10, you have current market rate at 3.94. And your interest rate on page four was a week ago, July 10th, and of course, interest rates fluctuate by the nanosecond. So are we looking at 3.94, or 3.94, or 3.76? And on the internet, I find 30-year double A municipal bonds, 3.9 today.
So the interest rate that you're paying is a, will be a 2.55?
Because of the subsidy.
Because, right. Without the subsidy, it would have been closer to the 3.76. And that is one of the rules that the Water Development Board has. They say that they have to provide interest rates five business day before, five business days before the governing bodies take action. So that's why, even though interest rates have moved since then, that's why we had to use that date for purposes of this analysis.
Fine. And then, why 10 million, not more, not less? Why 10?
I may have to defer to the, to the team from the Water Works System to provide...
Because 2.55% is a fabulous deal when we're making five on our money in the tax pull.
Thank you, Commissioner Mesmar and Commissioner Mayor. This stems from the award that the Water Development Board approved September of 2023. So it was approved at 10 million.
They said, we'll dance with this, and so we're dancing.
Yes. And we are dancing with them for additional funding.
And they did that right here in this room.
That's correct. That's correct.
But we, we will encourage them to give us more.
And there, we have six years to build up the, the projected reserve fund deposit?
Yes, sir. So what they do is you get to do 60 equal monthly installments over a period of five years.
You said earlier, and I just didn't have time to jot it down, if you go to Slide 3 or Page 3, you said cost of issuance was 107 and the loan origination fee. Which one comes from the Texas Water Development Board?
The loan origination fee, that $171,990. That's one point, it's a 1.75% fee that they charge on all their transactions.
And then the cost of issuance, are we paying that to the...
Financial advisor and bond counsel?
BOK, or that's to y'all?
So that pays bond counsel fee, bond counsel expenses, the Texas Attorney General's fee, our fee, the paying agent, escrow agent, CUSIP, the Texas Municipal Advisory Council, and miscellaneous. So it, it, and I have the detail, if you'd like, we can send the detailed allocation for the cost of issuance. It's not just any one fee, it's a, it's a culmination of all the different parties of the transaction that are, that are working to put it together. And then also, like, the paying agent registrar maintains it over the life of the bond issue.
Okay. And then would I direct my questions on the contract to you, ma'am? Or who would I direct the, the contract that's in my packet?
This, it's called, well, we have a letter from Bracewell, and then it's the escrow agreement. I wouldn't talk to you about the escrow agreement.
The bond counsel is not able to be here, but yes, sir, what the escrow agreement is, so this is, again, a program, it's a, it's an EPA program. They provide capitalization not only to the Texas Water Development Board, but for their counterparts across the country. And so what happens is the Water Development Board will allow you to close the whole $10 million after the, after they take their fee and put that in the escrow account. And so you cannot release it from the escrow account until the waterwork system will do monthly outlays. So they'll get all of the invoices attributed to the $10 million construction project. They submit those to the Water Development Board. They have their engineering staff and their financing staff approve every outlay submittal. They look at every single invoice because they want to make sure that these funds are truly being utilized to build this project. After the Water Development Board approves the outlay, then they correspond with the escrow agent and say, you can release the $4,762 that was requested with this. So the paying agent lasts the entire life of the bond. The waterwork system will send their payment to the paying agent, and the paying agent will pay the Water Development Board. The escrow agent is probably only going to be in place for two or three years until the construction process is complete. And when the construction process is complete, then there's no more work for the escrow agent.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much. Very thorough presentation, and the documents that were provided really answered most of, I think, the commission's questions. We appreciate all the, the hard work and are excited about this opportunity.
Thank you.
And when the commission approves, do they have to mention the rate and the term?
I think, I think it's just the, the, I mean, I have the, hold on, I have the ordinance here. Most of the time, it's, you just read the heading.
Oh, the caption? Okay.
Yes, sir, the caption.
All right.
Thanks again.
Thank you. And if you have any follow-up questions after you've thought about this, please do not hesitate to let me know. We'll be happy to respond as quickly as we can.
I think it would be great, and now that, you know, Commissioner has brought it up, to go ahead and just forward that over the breakdown of the cost of issuance, just so everybody has it in their packet.
Absolutely. We will send that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mark?
Ordinance authorizing the issuance and delivery of the City of Harlingen, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series 2024-A, CWSRF, authorizing the execution of paying agent registrar agreement and an escrow agreement relating to such bonds and pledging the revenues of the city's waterworks and sewer system to the payment of the principal and interest on said bonds and regaining other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve?
Wait one more. I would like to make some amendments to this agreement.
To the contract?
To the contract, yeah. If you look at Page 1, it talks about, Page 1, Paragraph 4, talks about an executive administrator, but it never, anywhere in this document or that attachment A, does it define who the executive administrator is? Part 2 is, is Finance aware that they're going to have to share with the escrow agent our investment policy? And are they prepared to do, you all are prepared to do that? Yeah, that's in Section 3, which is investments. And then on Section 9?
So let's go one by one. Are you wanting to make the amendment in Section 3?
Correct. Well, if we look at, again, Page 1, Paragraph 4, it just says, and it uses capital terms, right? Capital E, capital A for executive administrator. I just want to define who is that.
Okay.
Right?
Commissioner? I believe the executive administrator is referring to the executive administrator of the Texas Water Development Board.
Perfect. And if it's just a one-liner that says that, then that alleviates my concern.
Yes, sir. We can, we are happy to coordinate with bond counsel so that they can define that term. Absolutely. That's, that's a very easy accommodation.
Perfect. And then, the other thing I would like to add, ma'am, I don't know if you want to pop a step here, is if you look at Paragraph 9, or Section 9 on Page 3...
Okay.
It talks about the, it talks about merger and consolidation. If the bank, and I don't have the name of the bank, BOKF, if they merge, they're supposed to tell the Texas Water Development Board, and it says that here, but I want them to also make sure that they notify the city as well.
Absolutely.
Just add that, one, one thing.
Okay.
And then if we look at Section 14, Page 4, it talks about choice of law, which of course, we're going to be under Texas law, right? But here it says, venue for dispute shall be in Travis County. But under the Texas Civil Practice and Remedies Code 15.0151A, if there's a lawsuit involving a municipality that has a population of less than 100,000 people, then all lawsuits having to relate... people, then all lawsuits having to relate with that municipality are in the county which municipality is located. As such, we should amend it to say from Travis County to Cameron County.
Okay. I will, that is beyond my willhouse, but I will absolutely convey that to bond council.
Perfect. And then, there was, I think, one last thing, I'm sorry. Yeah, and also, and I'd like to add that venue provision and the paying agent/registrar agreement. Again, it just talks about the state law using Texas law. We're looking at, on my iPad, it is page-
Or what section?
Page 188 out of 227, but it's also known on the bottom, page 10, section 6.11, governing law. And again, just include that venue is proper in Cameron County.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
You do the numbers, I'll do the contracts.
Can we amend, can we amend the motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve with the amendments that Daniel suggested.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. And you guys? All right. Now, let's go back to item 10A.
10A. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit, SUP, to allow a bar lounge in a general GR district located at 1105 South Tam Lane, bearing a legal description of 3.4740 acres out of block 33, Stewart Place subdivision 139, 298, and 297, applicant Carlos Escobedo.
Go ahead. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow a bar lounge out of an existing 4,500 square foot building that's located on the corner of Tam Lane and Business 83. This is the subject property, and this is the location of the proposed bar lounge. The proposed bar lounge will be known as the Roadhouse Blues. Just to give you a little history on that building, the previous use, the last two uses were a bar lounge, and then prior to that, it was the church, and then prior to that, I think it was a barbecue restaurant. This is a floor plan that was submitted, based on the floor plan, they submitted, 24 parking spaces are required and 63 are provided on site. The hours of operation would be from Thursday through Sunday, from, from 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And they are proposing some live music at least once a week. This is the street view of the property. Building, fire, health, and police department reviewed the request and reported no objection to the proposed bar lounge. We did notify the property owners within a two-foot radius. Eight property owners received notification. We did receive one letter from one property owner who expressed a concern because they're proposing a residential subdivision to the east of the property. And this is their subject property. It's currently in the subdivision process. It's a six-lot subdivision, about five acres, five acres each lot. The petition they submitted doesn't constitute more than 20% that's required for a supermajority, it's only 8%.
They're doing five acres a lot? Is that what you're saying?
Five acres a lot. They vary between four and a half and five, five acres a lot. There are six lots in that property.
A lot of grass. That's very accurate.
Go check that out.
Staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval subject to provide, complying with a proper state permit, providing video surveillance, compliance with the requirements from appropriate city departments, of course, their hours of operation, and then providing a licensed security guard during peak operations from Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Take any questions, and the applicant is present for any questions.
Does the commission have any questions?
Motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good.
Do you have questions for the applicant or for-
One question. There's only one, one entrance and one exit to that, correct?
Correct.
And I believe that you said it was Stewart Place, the, the exit to it?
It's off of Tam Lane.
Tam Lane.
Tam Lane.
Is there a traffic light on Tam Lane and 83? Or is it just a stop?
It's a stop, stop sign.
When was the last business there?
It was there 2017. That was the last specific use permit for that. It was a bar.
So there was a, a motion to approve by Commissioner Betis?
Second.
Need to read it.
Please, we do.
Okay.
In ordinance submitting the code of ordinance to the City of Harlingen, a special use permit, SUP issued to Carlos Escobedo to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located at 1105 South Tam Lane, bearing a legal description of 3.4740 acres out of block 33, Stewart Place subdivision, 139, 297, 298, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve.
And was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Continuing on to item 10B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation of a 7.9 acre tract of land out of block 16, Cunningham subdivision, located along the south side of Primera Road, approximately 1,100 feet west of I-69 East, US Expressway 77, applicant Harlingen EDC, planning and development.
Hey, Mark, would you read that ordinance first?
Yeah.
Yeah. An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a 7.9 acre tract of land out of lot 16, Cunningham subdivision, located along the south side of Primera Road, approximately 1,100 feet west of I-69 East, US Expressway 77, binding down the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolution regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Item 10C, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential multifamily M2 district and general retail GR district to planned development PD district for townhome lots with a zero-foot side setback for all lots in the reserve subdivision located along the north side of North Business 77, Sunshine Strip, approximately 293 feet west of G Street, applicant Moreland Surveying Care of New Van LLC, planning and development.
An ordinance submitting the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the City of Harlingen, to rezone from residential multifamily M2 district and general retail GR district to planned development PD district townhome lots with a zero-foot side setback for all lots in the reserve subdivision located along the north side of North Business 77, Sunshine Strip, approximately 293 feet west of G Street, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Question. Zero, zero, zero-foot side setback.
Okay, yes.
What does that mean?
It's going to be built up to the property line on the, on the sides. Basically, it'll be built in a series, which would be something like this. Each, each lot will have one townhouse on the lot, and they'll be built in a series.
But not on the right-of-way?
Correct. It's on their property.
Okay.
So we had a, a motion and a second, right?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a request to amend the City of Harlingen One Vision One Harlingen Comprehensive Plan by changing the designation of the future land use plan from industrial to low-density residential for a 73.69 acre tract of land, more or less, out of and forming a part of blocks 28, 36, and 37, Pall Metal subdivision located along the south side of Grimes Avenue, approximately 6,500 feet east of lot 499, applicant Francisco Arriera, planning and development.
An ordinance submitting the City of Harlingen One Vision One Harlingen Comprehensive Plan by changing the designation of the future land use plan from industrial to low-density residential for a 73.69 acre tract of land, more or less, out of and forming a part of blocks 28, 37, and 37, Pall Metal subdivision located along the south side of Grimes Avenue, approximately 6,500 feet east of loop 499, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
I would like to add to this motion, if, if y'all are willing to, to look at, for staff, to direct staff to look at ways that we can have an HOA or whatnot, look at maintaining that drainage or detention bond.
I don't know the, Mark, question. I don't know if a government can force a land developer to have an HOA.
Yeah. All, all this is a change to the comprehensive plan. This doesn't necessarily deal with the maintenance of the, any retention facilities. So this doesn't deal with that.
No, I'll keep my motion.
But I, I would ask that you amend the motion to change the heading. It seems to be, it says blocks 28, 37, and 37. It should be 28, 36, and 37, Pall Metal subdivision.
Well, that's what it says here. 28, 36, and 37.
It's what it says on your agenda, but that's not what it says in the heading, ordinance on your, in the book.
So, and the ordinance is what? I'm sorry?
28, 36, and 37, it should be.
Okay. With the amendment of blocks 28, 36, and 37.
Okay. So if I understand this correctly, right now, it's just to, to change, to rezone, correct?
Correct.
And then, moving forward, maybe that's where, just guidance to your, to your department?
Actually, this one is just to amend, like, the future land use map. This is what we use for guidance when we're making a zoning decision. But if it's approved, he plans on coming back and submitting a zoning request to rezone the property.
And so that's, I think that's what the Commissioner is asking. That was a question. I mean, we want to encourage development. We want you to be here. We want Har, we want Harlingen to grow. But we want to see how we can work together and collaborate in making sure that we're doing it responsibly. But at this point, I think this is, this is a motion to approve this.
The city's not committing itself to maintain any retention.
Right, right. And that's a conversation we can have at a later, at a later point.
Okay. So we got, for, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adia. Welcome to Harlingen.
Item 10E, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading, amending chapter 36 of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing prohibited activities in the city parks, parks and recreation.
An ordinance submitting chapter 36, Parks and Recreation, Article 5, Public Conduct and Use of Parks and Recreation Facilities, Division 1, generally amending section 36-106 Park Rules and Policies by adding prohibited activities in city parks and facilities, and providing for a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $200 for each offense, and providing an effective date, providing for the publication of this ordinance, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10F, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an advance funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation and represent the City of Harlingen in all matters related to the Royal Colorado Trail Extension Base 4, referred to as Dixieland Reservoir Planning Project, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. We did receive a grant from, from TechDOT through the MPO as the TASSA, the Transportation Alternatives, set aside, funding. It is a planning grant and is to continue the, the trail from the end of, closer to Dixieland, towards the west. And so this planning grant is going to, is going to determine the most feasible route to make the connection to Dixieland Road, and then eventually, of course, to Dixieland Park. And so we have a resolution here. The TechDOT did send us a draft, AFA, which is in your packet. Staff recommends approval.
And so we're heading westward towards Lefaria.
Right, but we're staying within the city limits.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Quick question. So just, just to, so people can understand, because I know some people might be watching at home. So just to reiterate what you're saying, so this is just so that we can do the planning phase to eventually connect the trail to Dixieland Park, correct?
Right. It's to complete the, the, the plan that we had, right, which is to connect the Royal Trail to Dixieland Road.
And can you give us the timeframe, more or less, like, how long the planning phase is going to be?
So if we, if we signed the AFA, it goes back to TechDOT, of course, and they, they sign it, Mr. Gonzalez signs it. And then we have to approve, we have to get their approval for the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications. Then we have to submit the, the budget for it, and then we have to submit a contract as well, right? So all that's going to probably take maybe about four months for us to actually go out and, and advertise, and maybe get a, a firm on board to start the work.
And then once, once all this is covered, like, all the planning phase is covered, then it goes to where we can actually start. If, God willing, it's possible, we can connect it.
Right. So, so after we get the planning, so that's going to include the environmental work, it's going to include the plans and specifications. And so we'll have a shovel-ready project, the plans and specifications, everything will be complete. So then we can go to the next phase and then request funding for the actual construction.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10G, discussion and possible action to approve an upgrade of the city mobile app at a cost of $40,446, MIS Department.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Question.
Sure.
I sent you that email that it, there was some features that I wanted that were not included in the quote. Are those features going to be included after all?
Yes. What's going to happen, we'll be at, this new mobile app has the capability to add in more icons. Right now, we're restricted to 10. So this one, we have, we'll be adding an icon for events, which will be tied into the city calendar. So when, every time we add an event on the website, it will update the mobile app. And also, we'll be adding an icon for the online permitting, for online payments, so.
And for emergency events, the-
Yes, push notifications, yes.
Perfect.
This is sample what the app will look like.
And what's the timeframe, more or less, till, once we approve this, to it actually being where people can download it?
He's quoting 90 hours, so it's about three months.
Three months?
Once we ship you.
Okay. And I know we were talking about it yesterday during the budget, but I think if we do approve this, and once it becomes available, I think we really need to push it and push it, so that way we can increase the, the number of people that actually use the app. Because it's very, very useful.
Agreed.
Right. I think you said a thousand?
We're projecting a thousand online requests this, this year. The numbers that we have here on the first slide.
And half of those are this commission, so.
I was going to say, I bet you we can get up to 2,000.
So we want the rest of the community to also take advantage.
Yeah. The mobile app is also used by city departments to track on the requests that we get, coming on person or through the phone. So staff adds another 3,000 to those, those requests.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10H, consideration and possible action to approve amendment number two, amending the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Fund 2023-2024 fiscal year budget finance.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I come before you to-
Robert. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Robert, for being here. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, no, I think that's a testament to the staff. You guys have been doing really well with information. You're putting them in our packets. So we don't, I don't have any more questions. You guys answer them. So keep it up, please, all of y'all.
Everybody knows that it's not getting in your packet unless there's backup, so.
And I will just say that the packet is available online. So for the folks that are following along at home, you can also look to see the, the attachments that do make it easy for this commission, doing our homework to make sure that we can be efficient with our time. So thank you, I echo that sentiment. Moving on.
Okay. Item 11, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointments and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
All right. We'll start with-
I have none.
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 All right.
Okay. Item 12, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Items 12A, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 1 and 2, attorney consultation, Section 551.072, regarding 8377 properties, city manager. 12B, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government 551.071, to receive a briefing, a briefing from the city attorney regarding a matter- a briefing, a briefing from the city attorney regarding a matter protected by the attorney-client communication privilege, city attorney. And item 12C, consultation with legal counsel to, to Texas Government Code 551.071, to receive a briefing from the city attorney regarding a matter protected by the attorney-client communication privilege, city attorney.
Great, is there a motion to go into executive?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, the time is now 7:02 PM, and we will retire to executive session, be out shortly. Time is now 7:34 PM, and we are out of executive session and back in open session.
Item 13, action on executive session items, the city commission will reconvene in open session and may take any action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. 13A, consideration and possible action on items 12A, B, and C.
Make a motion to acknowledge report and proceed as discussed.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, and we adjourn, thank you.